Good evening and welcome to the Xenia City Council meeting on September the 11th, 2014. We had just played a rather striking remembrance of the terrorist attacks of 13 years ago, and want to thank very much City Clerk Michelle Johnson for assembling that for us. At this time, we are ready to begin our meeting.
Ready to begin our meeting, and we will ask firefighter David Mills to deliver our invocation this evening, followed by the pledge led by Chief Randy Person. Please join me in standing for the pledge and invocation.
May all of us remember with love and compassion this day. May we grieve with those who still mourn, and share memories with those who cannot forget. May we draw strength from those who bravely responded and gave their lives to save others. May we stand with strangers who became neighbors that day, and remember their generous hospitality. Above all, God, may we remember your faithfulness, and learn to trust in your unfailing love. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated, please. And as today is such a tremendous day of remembrance in the United States based on those horrible acts of 13 years ago, we wanted to take the opportunity here to assemble our first responders. As we remember those first responders who gave their lives, we are grateful for them, and we are grateful for our first responders, our city police, and our fire department that ably protect us every day. And we thank you, all of you gentlemen and ladies, for your service to this great city. Thank you so much for coming. It sounds like they have things they need to go do. Thank you. And a special thank you as well to firefighter Doug Cope and Scott Diniji. They were actually on Ohio Task Force One who were at ground zero for a period of time after the attacks. Thank you, gentlemen, very much for your service.
Just real quick, I just wanted to explain to you, we support Ohio Task Force One, we have for many years. And Captain Cope, and Lieutenant Diniji, if you guys want to step up here just a little bit, we're both at ground zero for nine days, helping with search, rescue, whatever needed to be done. It was a horrendous job, but I don't know if you know some of the pictures that Doug was in those. And we're proud to be able to support Ohio Task Force One. We currently support Ohio Task Force One with six personnel. And the nice thing about it, it's a zero cost to the city. Anytime they're put on alert and activated, they go under FEMA's guidelines and payroll. And then, so it's a zero cost to the city. It's just a commitment from these guys, and the other four guys that we currently have to assist throughout the world. Thank you.
With that, may I have roll call, please?
Vice President Long, Councilman Cowell, Councilman Lauterback, Councilman Smith, Councilwoman Mills, Mayor Bayless, President Engel.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion. I will excuse Councilman Cowell because he's out of the state on business.
Thank you very much. I have a motion to excuse Councilman Cowell this evening. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing that, roll call?
Vice President Long, Councilman Lauterback, Councilman Smith, Councilwoman Mills, Mayor Bayless, President Engel. Motion carried.
Thank you. May I now have a motion for approval of minutes of our August 19th Joint City Council Xenia Board of Education Special Session, please?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please?
Second.
Second by the mayor.
Any discussion or question on these minutes, please? For those in the city who were not aware, we met jointly with the school board's elected leadership and their superintendent, our city manager. Our police chief was there as well, and others. This was an exceptional opportunity where we wanted to demonstrate our increasing degree of partnership with the schools, as we discussed at least four different items of areas of joint cooperation that we could engage in in the future. And I believe both sides left the table that evening, very pleased with the night's discussion, and a commitment to continue that. So thank you very much to the school board, our city manager and superintendent for bringing together that program. Any other comments, please? Roll call, please.
Vice President Long, Councilman Lauterback, Councilman Smith, Councilwoman Mills, Mayor Bayless, President Engel. Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, motion, please, to approve the August 28th, 2014 Executive and Regular Session Meeting Minutes, please. Moved by the Vice President. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion or question on these minutes, please? Seeing that, roll call?
Vice President Long, Councilman Lauterback, Councilman Smith, Councilwoman Mills.
Obstained due to being unable to attend the executive session.
Mayor Bayless, President Engel. Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, at this time, we have a special presentation by Mr. Carl Cologne, Green County Public Library. Please step to the podium, sir.
Thank you very much, President Engel, Mayor Bayless, members of council. I really came to talk about something else this evening, but let me just take a moment to thank you for remembering September 11th. My dear friend Alan Leiderman died in the North Tower while evacuating his coworkers from his office. A very important remembrance, and just on a personal note, thank you. Now, why I came. Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to this opportunity to share with you about issue two, which will be the Green County Public Library levy on the ballot this November 4. From our kids to our seniors, the Green County Public Library brings incredible services to all in Green County. Our patrons can use over 75 million items through our collections and partnerships with other public libraries and our universities. Just to put that in perspective, the New York Public Library has 53 million items. We are literally able to offer access to the children of Xenia that are beyond the wildest dreams of communities across the United States. Every year, tens of thousands of our children use our libraries for reading programs and schoolwork. Through our Dolly Parton Imagination Library Project, over 23,000 books have been sent to Green County children below the age of five to bring them into the world of literacy in the last eight months. And nearly 40% of Green County's children under the age of 17 participated in our record-breaking 2014 summer reading program. We respect, value, and serve our homebound population. The library provides book delivery service to homebound elderly and disabled residents, more than 36,000 items last year. And here in Xenia, over 634,000 items were checked out to the community. Recently, hundreds of residents across Green County shared the impact that the library has on their lives through a website called thankfulforlibraries.com. Every story that you read up there is about the Green County Public Library. I hope you'll have a chance to check it out. Community support is vital to continue these programs. The library and these valuable programs, materials, and services are supported in part by a voter-approved countywide tax levy. This levy accounts for well more than half of the library's budget, and without it, the library would have to cut staff, close locations, and reduce hours. This is because since 2008, state funding to the library has been cut by a total of over $6 million, and we anticipate that it will fall by another 20% in the next 10 years. As a result, the library has been using savings to operate at our current service level since 2012. During these hard times, we've worked hard to reduce costs. We reduced hours. Through attrition, not putting people out in the street, but through attrition, we've reduced our staff. And even with these changes, we're finding ourselves in a position where our reserve funds will be exhausted late in 2016. But with community support, we can change that. Community support means success for students, service to seniors, and access for all. To continue the programs, to continue the books, to teach our children to learn to succeed in school, to keep our materials up to date, to be a resource to the business and government community, to maintain our current services and staffing, the library board has asked the community to please consider modestly increasing its local support this November. Green County Public Library's levy on the November 4th ballot will be issue two, and is a renewal of our existing one mil levy, and a small increase of nine tenths of one mil. The cost to property owners would be about $2.60 more per month on a $100,000 home. To put that in perspective, the average value to a Green County Public Library user is over $860 a year. That is because we are one of the 20 busiest public library systems serving communities of over 100,000 people in the United States, and we're so recognized by the Smithsonian Institution in 2012. We're going to levy early. Our levy expires in 2015. What we're asking for will not go into effect until 2016. We're going early so that the community has time to carefully consider its decision. Like you, our community expects us to plan carefully and to be stable for the future. And so we are trying to make sure that everybody knows what's going on early, no drama, just trying to get it done for the community the way that folks expect. We are honored and humbled that groups ranging from the Dayton Area Board of Realtors, to the Xenia Chamber of Commerce, Fairborn Chamber of Commerce, and Green County Health Coalition, Beaver Creek Women's League, and many others have chosen to endorse this levy because of our decades-long record of responsible service to our community. If you have any questions, give me a call at the library or drop by our website at www greennlibrary.info. Y'all know how to find me, and I want to thank you very much to your service to our community. If you have any questions, I would be delighted to take them at this time.
Just a couple of things. Thank you first for your leadership.
Thank you, Councilman Lauterback.
You know, as the public knows, I'm not a taxing spender. There's good taxes and bad taxes, but I consider this a good tax, and I support it 100% because the Green County Library is very important to our community. And the services you provide are very, very important. So I just want to go on record as saying I support this. You know, for a year, it's what, $31?
That's correct.
Correct. Somewhere around there. But you know, our two biggest communities in Xenia is Arrowhead and Lane Wood. Those houses are priced under $100,000. So for a family in Arrowhead or Lane Wood, it's going to be less than $31 a year.
The increase would be, that's exactly right, Councilman Lauterback.
So again, I support this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Lauterback. Your support means a great deal. Your experience in the community is well-known, and that you value the library services means a lot to me. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I believe Councilman Lauterback said it pretty well, so I just want to say that I think that the libraries are so important, and so many times people are saying that it is something of a dinosaur-type thing. But they don't understand, because they don't go in to visit, that they keep changing with technology and moving along with society instead of just staying in one spot. So I hope that the taxes will come to you, and I hope that we continue to grow our libraries and serve our communities.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Mills. I appreciate that. You're right. We do change with the times. It's funny. Every 10 years or so, something comes along, and they promise that it will kill the public library. We've had our biggest years ever in the last five years.
And I just want to say thank you. You're a great leader, really good for the Green County Library. I serve on the Green County Foundation Board, and so of course I support it and will endorse it, and get my name out there as an endorser of this levy. But it's vital for the community, children, adults as well.
Mayor Bayless, thank you. You know, that foundation is the group that's made that Dolly Parton Imagination Library Project possible, along with critical support right here in the Xenia community. The Xenia Rotary has made a tremendous difference to what we've been able to do. We'll hit the 25,000 mark of books sent to children under the age of five in the county in October, and gosh, that's what a library's for.
Any other comments?
I'd see the bookmobile at the schools quite a bit. The kids love the library. I think it's a great investment. Your staff is always very friendly. I take books back. Sometimes they're late. I don't have a problem paying the fees. In fact, the $2.60 per month is a drop in the bucket for me on what I paid sometimes, because we'll just forget. But the letter I get in the mail scares you to get back in there and pay it. But I think you do a great-
Sorry, it scares you. I didn't mean that.
I think you guys do a great job. Not only the Xenia Library, but I've visited the Bell Brook and the other ones too. And you do a nice job, and appreciate. And I would think anybody would be really not seeing the value in a library. I don't see how they could not endorse voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilman Smith, I'm glad you brought up the bookmobile, because one of the things that we're very passionate about is that some kids are not able to come into the library. Maybe their families or, you know, parents are working two jobs, working late shifts. And we have this running joke that, you know, you can run, but you can't hide from the library. We'll come to the schools, we'll come to the senior centers, we'll find a way to serve you.
Any other thoughts? I want to thank you very much for coming and bringing this to our attention. I hope that all of our members in the viewing audience are seeing this and stepping forward to also support this. I'm in complete support of it. My wife worked for the Green County Public Library System for a number of years before transitioning to the Xenia Community Schools, and working in the library there. So I have a great heart for it, as does she, for the services provided. I think your library does an exceptional job of that. I agree with all of my colleagues that the increase that you've asked for is incredibly modest, given the service that you provide. And I, and I believe all of this council certainly endorse it and wish you the best. And we look forward to many more years of service from the Green County Public Library to the community.
Thank you very much, President Engel. Thank you very much, all members of council.
At this time, we have an opportunity for audience comments. If anyone would care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please feel free to do so. Step to the podium, please. Provide us your name, address, and limit your comments to three to four minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Houston, and I live at 171 Tranquil Drive in Xenia. I'm here on behalf of downtown Xenia Now. I just want to remind everyone, we're having our second annual Swedish Day Carriage rides. Couple council people attended last year, and I think that both of them will agree, it was a very good event. It's $50 per couple. For that, you get your carriage ride, you get free gifts, you get musical entertainment, and refreshments. The date is October 18th, with a rain date of October 25th. We do have it set up online now, where you can go onto our website and order the tickets, and then go into the flower stop and pay for them. The website is www.zenianow.org. Very easy to take care of that. And those proceeds from that go to help pay for our hometown Christmas this year. Anybody is welcome, please. We only have 24 tickets, and I've already sold Councilman Engel two of those. So 22 left. I expect to see everybody in here. I will see you, sir. Yes. Like I said, I don't think there's anybody that attended last year that did not thoroughly enjoy themselves. Everyone said what a wonderful event it was, and they want to come back again this year. So we expect to see the city manager this year. If his wife's schedule cooperates, right. Yes. We changed our rain date this year, so it is a Saturday following. It starts at the Green County Historical Society at 4:00, and we go until 8:00. We've got rides going every 20 minutes. There's two different carriages, so we can be flexible with our scheduling. Okay?
Thank you very much.
I just want to plug that. It is a great event. And my carriage rider even stopped at a garage sale for me. Oh, I'm sorry.
I told everybody, this could go one or two ways. I have the pictures from last year, sir. If we don't sell out, we'll release them to the public. You know the nonsense about what happens in the carriage stays in the carriage?
Not true.
Not true.
Strike F from the record, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please?
Hi, my name is Denise Adams, and I'm with Citywide Cheerleading. And I just wanted to come in and talk a little bit about our organization, because we had applied for community funding. Just want to make sure that everybody knows where we're located at. Sometimes we're kind of hidden. We're out on 42 towards Spring Valley. We're in the Spring Valley Garden Center. They actually were in the building, and we've taken over occupancy. We started about six years ago. We just kind of like took a little spot. We used to come to the Braca Board every year, trying to have them help us find a facility, because we never had a place to practice. And we actually found the Spring Valley Garden Center, and we actually took in one little spot. And as they've moved out, and they're just outdoors now, we've actually occupied the whole building. So we have about 7,500 square feet, and we have what we call cheer floors in there, and they're padded flooring that all of our kids have to be on, so they can learn the cheerleading. Because we teach back handsprings. I'm a little bit nervous, so excuse me. But we teach back handsprings, talk layouts for all the kids. Most of your kids that are in the junior high and high school, all the kids that are doing the tumbling comes from our facility. So we actually work with about 100 kids right here in the Xenia community, and we actually have four cheer teams and four hip-hop dance teams. We take them all over the United States. We went to Florida last year. We go to Virginia Beach, Myrtle Beach. They come home with a lot of national titles. There's a lot of cheer gyms around, but I want to make sure that everybody is aware that we are in the community. We actually used to take care of the WeBucks Cheerleading, too. I actually ran the WeBucks Cheerleading for like 10 years. And as our competition side started growing, we released it back to WeBucks, and then we just have the actual competition side of things now. Like I said, we actually work with about 100 kids, ages 3 to 19. We provide some scholarships for the girls that are actually graduating. We've actually had, the last three years, we've had graduates that have gone on to college, so we actually provide them with some scholarships. So we're always looking for help, because we're kind of a nonprofit group, so we're always trying to do fundraising. So a lot of our parents and kids will work the Nutter Center events, Dragons events, so they work the concession stands. But in order for us to keep the building up and running, I have to have all these safety things in the building, so that I don't want them to get injured. So we're always trying to look for funding to help us out. So we're trying to look to the City of Xenia to help us a little bit with our funding, so we can keep going. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask me, or you can stop by and see us. We're always there. The only day we're not there is Friday, because we have a lot of our kids that go to the games and stuff like that. But we're there usually Sunday. Sunday, we're actually in there from 1:00 till 9:00 at night. But every team, there's always teams in their practice every night of the week. We actually have a Wright State Cheerleader that is one of our coaches. We have, actually, my daughter's one of the coaches too now. I started with her back when she was five years old, and coached her all these years, and that's what created this whole thing. Because there wasn't a lot of good coaches in the community, so we actually went and got all the training we needed, certifications. And now she's actually graduated out of cheerleading, and she's now one of the coaches, too. So we have girls that actually are coaching that have done cheerleading all their life. So they actually help with a lot of kids. So feel free to stop in and see us. We're hoping that we can actually do an open house. We just had the Fire Marshal out about four weeks ago to actually finalize our final move of making all the doorways right and our exit signs. So they came out and actually finalized that for us. We're just trying to finally get in the rest of the cheer flooring that we need, so we can have all three of our rooms completely furnished with safety flooring. But we're just trying to make sure that they're in a safe environment. And we actually, this is actually a service that all the kids can use. This is not, we don't turn any kids away. They come in, we put flyers in the school every spring, fall, letting them know we're forming teams. Come in for just tumbling, or they can be on our cheer teams, but we don't turn any kids away. They don't have to have any experience whatsoever. We bring them in, we teach them everything. All right? I just wanted to give you guys that. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please?
Mr. President, my name's Thomas Scrivens. I reside at 725 Lexington Avenue here in the city of Xenia. Mr. City Manager, and Mr. Law Director, and Mr. Finance Director. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, I was here, oh, I'd say a month or so ago, imploring you to clean up an alleyway, and now it's blossomed into a couple of alleyways. We're trying to stem the tide of nefarious activities in the community, and we'd like to see a little more commitment that would come from this august body, a little more priority that would come from the administration of the body, and a little more action, because we just don't see it. So we came last time, we described fully what the problem was. The problem now has compounded itself- The problem now has compounded itself just a bit, and we're going to have to now double our activities, which have been heretofore pretty much nil. So, I'd like to receive a serious commitment. I don't want to be like Adlie Stevenson. I didn't bring a Snickers. I'm not going to stay here till hell changes the temperature. I just want a serious commitment that we're going to clean up a couple of alleys. One, we had a decedent in the alley in BCI and pounded the car. I mean, that ought to put a light bulb on somewhere, somewhere. So, again, the locations, I will tell you again. First location is the alley that runs between North Fair Street and Leach Street, is bounded by East Church Street and East Market Street. It has at least 15 tires that I counted last time I rode through there on my bicycle, a couple of mattresses, box springs. It sounds like maybe we could get a couple guys who would come out with the orange suits and clean it up in the afternoon. I mean, it's just a couple alleys, folks. I ain't asking to pave no streets. That's another question. Okay, that's alley number one. Alley number two is the alley that runs between North Fair Street and Evans Avenue, bounded by East Main Street and East Market Street. You clean alleys up, we stop providing habitat for things that we don't want to go on. Simple. It's a one-to-one relationship. Again, we'd like to have you to take a look on East Church Street, just past 1,000 East Church Street, where it's about a half a block where the overgrowth is now past the curb. You can't park on that side of the street and open, open your passenger car door. We're going to have our 192nd anniversary pretty soon. It'd be pretty embarrassing for us to have that exist and not be cleaned up. And then finally, like to have you to install a receptacle for rubbish on the corner of Lexington Park there that's bounded by the Middle Run Baptist Church. We've cleaned our corner out, and the blow across that always comes across, I'm always the one who has to get out there on Sunday before to pick up on Monday to pick it up. I'm working for you for free. Okay? Please put a receptacle up in that corner. People come and they sit at that corner, and they do what people do at the park, and then I have to clean up behind them. That's got to stop. So, with that in mind, Mr. President, I thank you for your time, and I would like to know whether or not I have a serious commitment for some priority and some action coming from this policymaking and administrative body.
Sir, thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your time.
Well, the issues that Mr. Scrivens raises are concerns that we've had, and we've had for some time. We began a discussion last year with Mayor Bayless about looking at some initiative for revitalization in the East End. Those discussions have already picked up. In the time since your last visit, I know that I've had some discussion. I know Marcia has, as well as Councilman Lauterbach, with various individuals in the neighborhood. We've had discussions in response to that with our code enforcement departments, as well as the Police Division and our Community Development Department. I would suggest to you that one step is to look at cleaning up the alleyways. What we're talking about is to get at the core problems that are creating those conditions. And it's not just a code enforcement issue. It's a law enforcement issue. It's a housing issue. It's an education issue. It's a historical issue. So, what we're proposing, what we're working on, is looking at a series of initiatives next spring in partnership with the residents in those neighborhoods to ensure that we're getting at the root problems. Now, when it comes to some of the sort of smaller scale in terms of picking up mattresses, things like that, code enforcement's been out there. I know they're addressing those issues, working through the due process with those property owners. Where it makes sense, we can pick that stuff up. But that's, of course, diverting our staff away from other projects, so we have to balance, you know, priorities of making sure that we're doing a little bit of that with all the other tasks that our Public Service Department has. We'd love to be able to employ workers as we used to, in terms of community workers or jail. Those programs have been discontinued because of a lack of funding at the state and county levels. So, we simply don't have access to that manpower anymore. But again, I think your concerns, which have been echoed by other folks in the neighborhoods in that part of the community, as well as some other neighborhoods, have been heard loud and clear. Our approach is going to be all of the above. It's got to be comprehensive. If we want to turn around some of the issues that exist in these neighborhoods, it'll have to be by more than just the, you know, the process of picking things up and mowing the grass. We want to get at the true crime issues, at some of the poverty issues, and make sure that we're bringing the entire neighborhood up. So, I would say without any hesitation that we've heard those concerns, and we're probably well ahead of the curve in terms of beginning to look at how we can address them one-on-one next year.
Councilman.
And all due respect, I don't think we should wait till spring to address these issues. We've heard from several neighbors out there, and I'll refer to the Law Director. If we know there's a business owner's got mattresses and junk on his property, we can send them notice, right?
Correct.
What's the next process if they don't clean it up?
We can file charges against them.
Have we filed charges against any of those folks that were-
I have charges right now that have been submitted, but I don't think it's those particular folks right there.
I think we need to start filing some charges. And if they don't, if they don't live up to their end of the bargain, then is there any way the city could clean that up and bill the property owner?
Well, we do, a good example, Councilmember, remember, we had some issues over, what we call the Five Points a while back. You know, we ended up sending a crew over there to clean some of that out.
And you did a very good job over there. I don't know why we can't do the same thing where Mr. Scrivens and, he's not alone. I've got several calls from neighbors out there. It's a public safety issue. I mean, I could go on and on about what we need to address, especially from a public safety issue. But, that's another story. But I don't know why we have to wait till spring to have whatever you're going to do in spring. I think we need to address this problem tomorrow.
And I should probably be clear. I'm not suggesting that we would wait till spring to pursue any of those enforcement activities. I'm talking about in terms of rolling out some real neighborhood-level discussion and some additional, other than just calling a core community development activities. That's what we're talking about doing next year. Efforts actually with some of these problem areas, you're absolutely right. There's no reason why those issues can't be addressed, you know, within days through the code enforcement process. And again, if we're not seeing any response from the property owners, then we could certainly look at trying to help, you know, pick up the, some of that material ourselves.
The mayor and I attended a, Home Solutions is building a six-unit complex. We attended a meeting there, and we listened to all their complaints. And I asked Rhonda Bear in that meeting to get with you and the police chief and anybody from this council that wants to sit in a meet. I asked for that within 30 days. We've got problems out there we need to address right now. And to get an initiative of waiting till spring, I want to get this problem solved. I'd like to get a meeting set up with you, the police chief, and anybody from this council wants to attend because there's some problems. There's some problems we need to address. So, that's my position. I, it's, we need to do something soon.
Other comments, please?
We can, we continue to down this, even, even on my end of town, the west end of town, I've got four complaints in my email right now of property owners not maintaining their property. And the first place, and the only place that a property owner is around them have to go is the city of Xenia. From grassroots, we've been reaching out a lot. But I think if we can mow someone's grass for them within a month, we should be able to clean up some property within a month. And I would support any level of prosecution to finish this. And I do support Brent's and the mayor's, and you've been involved with me too, with Lauterbach, any long-term solution to, at the end of the day, some of these property owners need to respect their neighbors by maintaining their properties. This is not city property that this trash is sitting on. This is private property that they've allowed their properties to get this far. And it could be economically driven. I don't know. I don't know what the individual situations are. But the alley needs cleaned up, and it shouldn't go into this, we're going to get into the fall and winter here. And if we think our city staff's busy now, wait till it's time to start plowing roads.
Yeah, I would tend to agree. And of course, our city manager knows, I certainly have a vested interest in the East End. We know that a lot of the properties are rentals, and so the care is not taken, as with some that are owned. But still, it is a concern. Those of us who own property certainly don't want the areas around us looking bad or the places behind us looking bad. So, it is a real concern, and I've talked with all kind of the citizens and neighbors who have those same issues as well. So, I would just suggest that anything we can do immediate, and especially around Middle Run Baptist Church, which is the oldest Baptist church in the country. Is that right?
Yes.
And so, I mean, we have such historical places right there in the East End, as well as all over Xenia, but we want to protect the property. So, if we can do anything immediate, I would suggest that we do that as well.
Any other comments, please?
Tactically, Mr. City Manager, we've talked about, obviously, the code enforcement process. Opportunities for filing charges are clearly available. What is the timeline for that? Is there a, by statute, that if we were to serve someone with a notice, we give them two days, three days, five days, two weeks?
Long story short, I mean, that's not going to get the property cleaned up.
No, I understand.
I mean, we can, we can file the charges, but if they come in and plead not guilty, I mean, you're looking at three or four months before their case is going to get resolved. So, I mean, that's not going to be an immediate fix, but it's something we certainly can pursue.
Let me ask this, then. How and why did the Five Points property get cleaned up so fast? Was there anything, was there, was there charges filed against them? We had two former councilmen come here and complain about their neighbor, their neighborhood, which is Five Points, and it got cleaned up right away. So, I don't, I think we should be, treat everybody equally. If Five Points can get, by the way, did a great job. The mattresses was removed, all the high brush where people were hiding, sleeping behind, made a big difference. But I guess I'm, I'm just, it's beside myself. If we can do that with Five Points, why can't we do it with anybody's neighborhood? I just-
Well, our responsibility, because I think you're right. I think we can. I think we have to be careful about overextending ourselves in terms of, because the properties in the East End are not the only neighborhoods that we have concerns in.
I understand.
You know, there are some other of our, of our other older neighborhoods, Langwood and so forth, that we, we have some of the same issues. We actually have no staff. We have one staff member that is funded as a sanitation staff member. And that, this is the category, the technically, this type of work would fall under. So, then that means we have to divert streets workers, water, sewer workers to do this type of work. So, I hear council, and we'll respond to these needs, and bearing in mind that just the properties that Mr. Scrivens has identified tonight, you're talking four, five, six different properties versus that one property. So, we will respond to those, but I think it is a little bit of a slippery slope. If the council wants to make a commitment to go out to all of these properties, then we do have to do it citywide. And we do not have the resources to respond to all those properties because it's a fair amount of work, which is, again, I think, you know, we can address the short term, but we've got to address the chronic, long-term issues that are causing these problems. You know, the poverty issues, the drug issues, the crime issues. That's when I say talking about spring next year. To launch that scope of initiative, we need some time to start building the network and the relationships in these neighborhoods, and building that trust and that rapport to get at those long-term issues.
Do we have summer help?
We have part-time summer help, unfortunately, most of them are leaving now because of the college, college age.
Have we ever tried to reach out to churches, schools? Somebody wants to do community service through the courts on the weekend or to clean, I'm not just talking about the East End. I'm talking about east, south, north, and west. I mean, there has to be, there has to be a way we can address this problem. And I know that it goes deeper here with the drugs and the alcohol and everything, but we, it's, we've got some blighted communities, and we need to step up to it. So-
And I think to that point, that's exactly what we're talking about, is trying to develop those relationships, start those conversations with the churches, with people at the neighborhood level. Truthfully speaking, if the folks in the neighborhood are not invested in turning around the conditions of the neighborhood, then we're fighting an uphill battle. And we want to work with those folks who are invested to start to develop those relationships. But again, we have, we lack, we lack administrative capacity, as well as the, you know, even the public service workers. So, as we look at our priorities, it will take us some time to, with our limited staff, to go out and start having those discussions, build those relationships. So, again, that's why I say we're looking at spring for that more in-depth effort, and to do that in conjunction with what we normally do with our spring cleanup, where we do have some volunteer help. I know Brack is usually involved in that. So, that's the timeline for that broader initiative. Again, we'll take some staff. We'll go out. We'll see what we can do in terms of some immediate cleanup of these areas. But again, we want to get at the core issues, so we're not sending those staff members out there every, every couple months to clean it up, but rather, we're cleaning it up and then turning the problem around.
You'd be surprised. We adopted a vacant building ordinance. You'd be surprised that some of the slum lords in town, that once they started hearing that this council was serious, they started stepping up to the plate. They either stuck their sales signs in front of their property, or they're fixing them up. We need to do the same thing in our neighborhoods. Once, if we file charges against these people, they're going to, they're going to know we're serious. If we, I don't care if it takes three months, four months, put the charges against them. So, that's my position.
And that was where I was driving towards, is I would just like to be fair to all, respecting people's rights on both sides of the equation. But if we have issued a notice and at the fifth day, fourth day, whatever it is, we are then, as rapidly as possible, moving to the next step and demonstrating that degree of seriousness, that we will follow through on consequence actions as necessary.
And I think that's my question. When are we allowed to go on someone's property and not infringe on their rights? So, I don't understand the law. You know, when, if we haven't contacted them, couldn't they come back and say, well, I didn't know, and you took my mattress, and it was the best thing I ever had? You know what I'm saying? It's that-
Well, you're talking about alleyways, so I'm assuming this is-
So, the alleys is ours. And I think that we definitely need to clean it up. And I definitely agree with, with everybody else that we need to start pressing these charges to start setting and process a way of doing and changing the way we do things. But I don't understand law. That's why I don't sit in that chair. And, you know, I don't know where that comes in. An alley, doesn't that belong to the city?
Yes, and those, we need to make sure that those are maintained and kept clear. I know some of the properties have been, I've been out to look at some of these neighborhoods myself. So, some of the areas that have been addressed are on private property. So, that's where I would defer to Law Director, because we do need to be careful. I mean, we do have some liability that we're assuming if we're going to enter the private property and begin to remove those.
Thank you.
Mr. President? Absolutely. Neighborhood approach, though. Neighbors, I've talked to my neighbors the other day. We have to take ownership of our neighbors. It's pretty deflating, though, that it's, it's easy to get a group of volunteers to go and pick up trash. It's deflating, though, if they do that, and that one property owner's allowed to drop the ball and just make it. So, we have to prioritize those cases. And back to Brent's point, they're not just in that one alley. I can pick a few on my street alone. We have to take that, we have to prioritize those major cases, and maybe announce that we're doing some of that and try to build up some community support to come behind and help with volunteers behind that. But if we don't take as a city, the city government, the initial first shovel in the pile, I'll be hard-pressed trying to motivate volunteers just to waste their time. It's going to come back.
And sometimes, it's, you got the hands, but they don't have a truck to put it in. If we could provide a truck, a vehicle, a means of getting it out, then maybe the hands would be there to help it along. So, that is a wonderful way of approaching it. But again, it comes back into the neighborhoods and getting the volunteers.
Councilman?
And I've brought this up in the past. I still believe in neighborhood watch groups all over the city. It's neighbor looking after neighbor with, with contact with our Police Division. And I would hope that would be, under the broader spectrum, that would be discussed in the future. You'd be surprised if you put a neighborhood watch group up in a sign. Some people pay attention to that. But I understand that we've got bigger issues than, it's, the roots are deeper. But still, I'd like to see some of these blighted areas cleaned up as soon as possible. Thank you.
Just a point clarification. Let me ask Mr. Scrivens. Is Middle Run the oldest in Ohio or the coun, I think I said country?
State of Ohio.
In Ohio. It's the oldest Baptist church of the state of Ohio, 1,000 East Church Street, founded in 18- Founded in 1822. Take a look at that church, it's beautiful.
Please.
In relation to our 192nd church anniversary, this first weekend in October, everyone's invited to activities, I wanted to add that we would volunteer our Sunday School to help clean up and on task force to, you know, if we could have a receptacle or a truck moving and people walking on both sides, I mean, there's a way this could get done and make everything grow, everybody would benefit. It's a win-win-win all the way around when we start at the bottom and we work up. So my whole thing is curb appeal. If the grass at the curb and in the sidewalk is taken out, just say here on the corner, the green mint facility, look how that'll make it look. It'll look a whole lot better. That's all I'm asking. Just when people go through here, they see, oh, wow, the snow blade does the job, I know that, Don Corr told me all about that. But if we just paint it up, it's springtime, it's our festival time, that's why we're doing what we do. I mean, let's make the city look good for the festival. I mean, that's all. I love the place, I love you guys, it's a thankless job, but I thank you anyway. Thank you.
And thank you, sir, for putting that initiative forward. I think that's exactly what a number of us were just speaking about is, there's certainly a shovel that the city can put in or a truck, and then it takes the community coming together to get to those roots of those problems. And I thank you for bringing it to our attention again. And Mr. City Manager, I thank you for the foresight of looking forward into next year to having a uniform program of approach to this. Anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please? Seeing no more, let's move to reports of committees. Councilwoman Mills, Board of Recreation, Arts and Cultural Activities, please.
Well, thank you. We've had a busy season of our six musics in the park and our three movies in the park. So we're having a little bit of a quiet time, but it's never really quiet because we are gearing up for Hometown Christmas. We are having a family activities and events towards Independence this year. So we want to invite everyone to come and save the date, it is December the 13th, so please make sure you save that date and come and visit us. And it's going to include Xenia Station with Santa there and all of the downtown area. And you can walk the bike path and see all neat little things along the way as you travel from the station to downtown. So I want you guys to save the date and we will keep on talking about that as time grows nearer. And the other thing that Brack looked at, well, many things, but the one that I want to bring up is the banners, the beautiful blue banners of Xenia. We are looking at starting that program again. Unfortunately, the cost has gone up a small amount, but I believe that, you know, when we haven't done the banners for over five years, that we are very excited about that. So we have a couple more things to check out before we can actually get it kicked off, but I hope to kick it off by next month and invite everyone if they would like to. We've got 30 naked poles that need some blue banners. So we want to encourage people for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Mills?
Where's the 30 naked, I thought we had all of our poles filled.
We keep on adding poles.
We've got some new ones.
We've got new ones.
West Maine?
Out west Maine and more down around the bike area again.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's...
Anything else for Councilwoman Mills, please? Thank you. Councilman Smith, Traffic Commission, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was no meeting in the month of September.
Thank you.
Due to lack of agenda items, our next meeting is Monday, October 6.
Sorry, thank you. Anything for Councilman Smith and Traffic Commission, please? Mayor Bayless, Board of Zoning Appeals, please.
Board of Zoning Appeals had no agenda items, so we had no meeting.
Thank you. Anything for the mayor, please? Time in our meeting for items from City Council and Mayor, is there anything that any of my colleagues need to bring forward for good of the order, please? Seeing none, moving to reports of city offices. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President, Council. Just a couple of items this evening. The first item is a motion requesting authorization to enter into an agreement with First Energy Solutions to make the firm the certified retail energy supplier for the city of Xenia. Completion of this action is a critical step in moving our electric aggregation program forward toward full implementation, we would hope by January of 2015. The city received only two competitive bids for electric aggregation services. The limited response, we believe, is attributable to the fact that DPNL is transitioning its standard service offer to a competitive bid structure. They are currently in the process, literally this month, of bidding 40% of their service load on the competitive market. Unfortunately, that means that timing has not been on our side with the process and we've had to work to secure our bids for our aggregation program in the same timeframe. The uncertainty of the DPNL standard service bid has made potential electric suppliers for Xenia reluctant to provide bids. Nevertheless, we've received two qualified bids and we feel that they provide meaningful alternatives. The first offer was from IGS Energy. IGS submitted a bid with a fixed price offer for a 24-month period, a flat rate of 6.22 cents per kilowatt hour. Keep in mind that the DPNL rate for, keeping in mind that the DPNL rate for their standard service charge is likely to go down as a result of the current bid process that they're underway. So the fixed rate that IGS has provided will probably be closer to what DPNL's new rate will be. The second bid was received from First Energy Solutions. FES provided a more complex bid with several options, but essentially the final bid alternative that we considered was a model that would guarantee a 15% reduction over the standard service rate provided by DPNL. This currently, under the current rate, would be 6.59 cents per kilowatt hour. And considering these two alternatives, one key difference between them was that First Energy Solutions currently offers budget billing services as part of their bid proposal. IGS does not. This was a major consideration for us, so that over the short term, even though there is a potential for a higher savings, a little bit higher savings with IGS, the lack of budget billing, we felt would create some real obstacles for many of our residents. So at this time, it's the opinion of our consultant and the recommendation of staff to move forward with a contract with First Energy Solutions with an aggregation rate detailed in the proposal, that would be for a 24-month period, at which time we could come back and would be able to renegotiate with the process again and look at alternatives at that point in time. I'll add that in moving with council action tonight, hopefully we'll be able to move forward with, beginning with a much more aggressive community outreach and begin the transition process to start for a likely implementation of the program for January of 2015.
Right.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to authorize the City Manager to execute an agreement?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback, second by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion on the motion, please?
This is 15% lower, right?
This will be 15% lower than their, so if their, if DPNL's rate would go up, this would go up a little bit, but if it goes down, it will also go down. So it'll be elastic with the DPNL rate. But again, that'll provide some immediate savings for our residents. We feel like overall is a better option and again, I really, the deciding factor was the budget billing, to be quite honest. We just felt that that was going to really create some problems for a lot of our residents and it was just a hassle that they didn't need and that we didn't need as well.
This is major for our community, for our citizens, and just want to thank you and your staff for really hanging in and finding us the best rate.
And I would add that, and I don't have the numbers here, I've got it buried somewhere in here, but, you know, the estimates of what this does in terms of freeing up, your average household, I think we estimated about $100 a year. So it's not a huge savings, but it's a little bit. When you combine that over all the households, you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars in savings in our community that can be reinvested in other, you know, services or purchases here in the community. So it really has a compounded value for us.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion, Councilman?
Now, I want to piggyback the mayor, I think this is great for our citizens. And I've talked about this in the past, I think if we can do natural gas next, that would be another great, great value to our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, please? Councilman?
I think Councilman Long has one too, but, okay, I got confused here. So we got bid from First Energy and then IGS, but First Energy is DPNL?
No.
Okay.
These are both independent electric providers. What we will do is contract, and our recommendation is with First Energy. They are the generation, they're actually generating electricity. The electricity will still be carried through the DPNL system. So our local consumers will still see it as part of their overall fees, a trans, what is it?
Transmission.
Transmission, the transmission charge, distribution charge through DPNL, but their electric generation rates, the actual, the electricity itself, but that's the rate that will go down.
Okay. I guess my question, why didn't DPNL bid for this?
DPNL has actually gotten out of this business.
Okay.
They are one of, I think, the last in Ohio really to move in the directions that they've moved, but they're getting out of the business of creating the electricity and moving just to the distribution of, through the electric grid system.
Okay, but I get, because I got Eric here, we got somebody from DPNL here, right? You're still with him? Okay.
Just making sure.
Like their sister company is DPNL Energy, right? Did that not, I mean, did they not throw a bid in here? I just don't, I just find it hard to believe only two companies would be here.
I'm going to defer to Brenda, our consultant. She can pretty much, if you want to grab the podium.
I sent the RFP out to 11 different companies and DPNL Energy Resources was one of those. We actually did get four bids. Two were very competitive, one was non-responsive because they responded incorrectly, but their bid wasn't competitive anyway, so it wasn't as if we lost something there. And then another bid that wasn't as competitive as the two. So we actually did get four bids out of the 11. There were several of those 11 that contacted me and said, "We are not certified to supply in the DPNL area. We're taking a look at what's happening with the structure and the bidding to make sure that we want to enter that market." So they're not currently participating. DPNL, I talked with them, talked to DPNL Energy, and I thought they would bid, and they didn't, and I don't really understand why, but they did get the RFP.
Okay. And I appreciate the savings. I just don't want to vote somebody out of a job here because, you know, DPNL, I think, has been a valuable member of our community. I know a lot of people have some issues sometimes, but they'll still pay DPNL, the check will still be written to them. It's just, this is a provider.
Yep, they're actually, you know, they're actually generating the electricity themselves. And then a DPL system is still utilized to deliver that electricity to every house and every business.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Vice President?
The nice thing is that we'll be bid every couple of years, so whoever wants to come back to the table then can come. I'm really interested in, I don't need details tonight, but I think the council might appreciate. I'm really interested in knowing how we're going to reach out to the public to inform them. Whenever we make changes, you know, not even to this extent, we get complaints quite a bit that we didn't communicate properly, so I'd be interested to hear the ideas from staff.
I couldn't agree more. It's something we've already laid out in terms of, we have a very detailed timeline. It is critical, and I can't stress it enough, that we are effective in getting this information out. We don't want to take people by surprise. We also want to make sure that they're informed and understand the values of the options that they have available to them. One of the benefits to the program and the way the bid is structured is that residents do have the option, if they opt in, they can always opt back out later. But again, we want to get the information out there, we want to get it out there so they understand as we move into this, because it's new to our community and a lot of folks have been very confused over recent months as they've been seeing all the information that's out there. So I concur and we can certainly share that timeline and what those efforts will entail.
I think I read in here that if, there is no penalty for residents to want to opt out later. Yeah, there it is.
That was an important provision that we included in the paper.
Thank you.
Councilwoman?
A suggestion, maybe a flyer in the water bill. Many people do not read the water bill because they pay online. So the people that pay online would also be more likely to get online and to see the website of the city, but those who don't usually use the online services or computers and such do pay by check and do read the water bill, so that might be, but not just the small print on it, but a whole flyer explaining.
Yeah, an actual insert, that's one of the things that we've talked about, that and having marked our sandwich board outside.
Yeah, well, that'd be good.
That'd be real effective.
We get in the newspaper for sure that way.
Right.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
For the second item this evening, we're actually, need to pull that item, a little bit of an explanation. We have a joint resolution in principle that's been agreed to by the administrators and city managers. I should say, really, that's the county administrator, the Beaver Creek city manager himself and the Beaver Creek Township administrator. However, there is a request made late this week that those, that group of individuals meet, and we have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, to discuss the larger ramifications, particularly the financial match that would be required for the project, so that when this joint resolution is passed, that we're able to speak to what alternatives will be available to look at actually funding the project. So again, the majority of the work's been done, want to make sure that we're all on board with the feasibility of the project. We have every intention as soon as we can to bring this resolution back to support. So look for that again at a future meeting and then I can update council after the meeting next week in terms of what...
Thank you.
The final item then for this evening is staff's requesting supplemental appropriations for several unexpected items. First requesting an adoption of an ordinance as an emergency to provide supplemental appropriations to repair damage caused by vandalism and to replace an air conditioning unit at Xenia Station and to transfer appropriations to cover IT personnel costs. A little more detail, as reported previously, several weeks ago vandalism occurred to one of the new doors at Xenia Station. Quote for repair and replacement of that damage is $2,277. About the same time, staff became aware of a critical system failure with the air conditioning system at Xenia Station, requiring an anticipated replacement of that unit at a quoted price of $7,075. That air unit, I should mention, is original to the building's construction, so it's about 16 years old and well, you know, well timed to be replaced, unfortunately. Neither of these projects was budgeted for and funds are not currently available in the remaining line for Xenia Station to cover these expenses. Finally, we're including in this action a request for expediency state from the finance department to transfer funds to cover IT personnel costs. The IT administrator positions approved part of the strategic plan are distributed differently than the analyst and technician plans that we had previously budgeted for. So those, there's a requirement to change some of the funding mechanisms there. So again, this is not to appropriate new funds, but rather to transfer funds so that those positions can be paid for. So again, a staff's requesting adoption as an emergency of the ordinance for the appropriation of the Dallas, Xenia Station and the transfer for the IT personnel.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback, second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any discussion or question on this motion? Councilman?
Without showing our hand, do we have any suspects in the activity at Xenia Station?
We do. We had good video surveillance. The case is still under investigation. I can't speak too much to it. One of the important things is given that location and the biking traffic that comes through, not all local, so we have a suspect, we don't have the person identified by name, but it is part of an active investigation.
Yeah, I think we should prosecute to the furthest. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, please? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
And a brief update, I know we've talked a lot about salt, and just to let you know, we'll be hopefully making, informing some of our partners tomorrow what our general approach we think needs to be, and I kind of wanted to run it by council. The intention is to move forward with making sure that we're able to retain enough of the salt material to be able to get us to what our average annual usage would be, which is about 1,500 ton. We think it's prudent to keep an overage above that so that we would have some salt left in our barn to begin next year. Then we also want to make a minor amount of material available to Xenia Community Schools as well as Central State, both of whom have reached out to us. That would be a pretty small amount. After that, we are actively working with the city of Beaver Creek, city of Belbrook, and Sugar Creek Township to ensure that the city of Fairborn has some material available to them, as well as an amount of material available for the Green County engineer who provides services to Xenia Township and many of the, of the rural jurisdictions around the county. So we want to make sure that we've got some degree of coverage here locally for immediately neighboring jurisdictions, and then our group will be working with Swap 4G to provide any excess material beyond that to a broader audience, communities who, you know, are not in Green County but have needed material as well. So we've got the sanitation barn, we've actually started to take delivery of some of the first loads of, of salt. Sanitation barn, I think they finished up pretty close to today, it's been converted over to store that material. We've been blessed with getting a bid, but I got to be honest, it's been a lot of work, and will be some more work moving forward to help make this material available, but I did want to update you on where we're, on where we're at. If you had any concerns, we can address them, but that's the strategy moving forward.
Any questions?
Just a comment.
Please.
Just a comment to the city engineer's office. I mean, this is a nuisance on that department that you wouldn't have to normally deal with, so, so you guys, thank you to find homes for all that salt. Typically, they just want to salt our own roads, but, thank you.
You had said, Mr. City Manager, that we were going to plan on holding the amount that we would normally use. We used about 300 extra tons last year, if I recall.
In fact, it's even more than that. We'll, we'll end up with, we're looking at probably about 2,000 ton, give or take.
Is what you would plan to hold in reserve?
Correct. That'll be for this year's usage plus hopefully a few hundred ton to have in the barn, assuming a normal winter. We're hoping for a less than normal snowfall, but.
My wife sent me the extended forecast. I was just going to say, I think we probably ought to plan for the abnormal.
You didn't see Al Gore's forecast?
Did he invent the internet, too?
Global warming.
Oh, okay.
And having seen those forecasts, that's why we want to make sure we've got some material in the barn so that we should get some early snows next fall. And again, not knowing, I read a report this week that said it would take, last year's storm event would take two years for the salt industry to recover and to have, you know, supply in hand that they normally have. So if we have another bad year, that's going to extend that, that shortage out that much further.
So holding a non-trivial amount in reserve is undoubtedly in our best interest.
Prudent idea, yes.
Thank you.
And just one final, under our summary of action items tonight, I do have a memo I'll provide to council. Was hoping to have some, hopefully, brief discussion on the community funding and then get some final direction to move forward and hopefully put that to bed for this year, so I'll bring that up since it's listed in the document.
Thank you. Anything for the city manager this evening, please? Seeing none, Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. 1:00 AM this evening, scheduled bills in the amount of $283,981.62.
Thank you. May I have a motion to pay our bills, please?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion or question on the bills, please?
Just, just a comment. I want to commend staff. This council has always supported buy local, and I know, and when we say buy local, that's kind of spreading it, spreading it around, too, not just to go with one company. I noticed Harworth, Harworth Tire, we had them do $952 worth of work. Harworth, Jim Harworth, used to own Detroit Tire. Detroit Tire's still in business, but again, I'm, I'm glad we're not only keeping it in Xenia, but we're trying to spread it equally with our vendors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Anything for our finance director this evening, please? Seeing none, Mr. Law Director.
Nothing this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything for our law director this evening, please? Turning to summary of action items, Mr. City Manager.
I'll pass around here the memo I provided, and we can go over just in some quick, quick detail. Essentially, what I've done, I got some specific feedback, I think, from the council president. Tried to incorporate some of those in ideas into some of the thoughts that, that I had had, and based on the notes that I took from our last discussion on this. So essentially, the recommendations that, that I would posit to you tonight, and again, I didn't bring back legislation because I didn't want to draft something without having more discussion, only to have to change that, but again, wanted to make sure there's consensus in terms of the overall policy. So what recommendations I'm bringing back tonight are to maintain the current programming funding at $10,000 a year, to approach this as a three-tiered system, with tier one being for charitable service providers and nonprofit special event committees located and providing, in and providing services free of charge to cities, to city residents who seek funding for special programs or projects that directly benefit the people of the community. Funding for this tier would be limited to $3,000 per application for a year, and applicants would be eligible for two rounds of funding in a five-year period, but not in consecutive years, which is consistent with some of the current provisions. The second tier would be for nonprofit recreation organizations located in and providing services to Xenia, seeking funding for special programs or projects that benefit segments of the community. To be eligible for funding, applying, recreation organizations would need to require, would need to provide scholarship program for their participants for lesser means to help off, for those of lesser means to help offset participation costs. Funding for this tier is recommended to be limited at $2,000 per application for a year, and applicants would be, again, eligible two times in a five-year period, but not in consecutive years. The third tier would be for community organizations, profit-based, not necessarily nonprofit, and pay-for-play type of recreation organizations that do not have scholarship programs that are located in and providing services to the city, who could seek funding for programs or projects that benefit segments of the community. Funding for this tier would be, as recommended, limited to $1,000 per application once within a five-year period. Recommending the scope of funding applications be limited to programs, including community services and special events or projects, for example, a capital project. I do not recommend providing operating funding as an eligible use. Further, recommend that groups would need to certify that the funds will be used for the described purpose and must provide evidence of proper use of those funds back to the city manager's office at the completion of the purchase of the program. Applying groups should be required to clearly demonstrate how the community or specific members of the community would benefit from the provision of the funds. Recommend giving priority to request that benefit the community as a whole rather than some, subsets of the community. I am recommending that beginning in 2015, that as part of the 2015 budget, we set aside appropriation for community funding at a total of $5,000. The reason for that, given some of the other conversation that we had, the next bullet point recommending that we set aside in the, in the budget for next year, $3,000 for BRACCA special programs and $2,000 for First Friday program series. The intent behind these three provisions, I didn't want to add additional burden to the budget when we're already so tight. So it would allow us to, to provide resources to BRACCA and First Fridays, which have a tremendous, tremendous community impact. First Fridays in particular because of its economic benefits that, that are provided to the community. But then we would still be able to provide $5,000 for next year, and then after, you know, as we get through next year's season, make a determination about the 2016 budget, how we want to approach funding for these different areas. Further recommending the funding of Xenia Community Schools-related organizations not be allowed, other than that we would leave open the opportunity to co-fund special events or programs that would benefit the citizens. So for example, special programs like if they wanted to do some type of educational outreach, that we could provide some funding for that. And then what I also added, these are the existing guidelines under that last bullet, lettered A through K. Many of these provisions, I think, probably still apply, but I've highlighted and crossed out some areas that run counter to what I've recommended above. So essentially, what I'm saying is I think, I think it's prudent to keep some of these provisions in there. Overall, what I'm recommending is an approach that's focused, that focuses the dollars on community-wide programming that are charitable in nature, that are providing community events in nature. There's definitely value in looking to provide funding for many of the individual recreation groups, but again, as I look at it, I think that should be a lesser priority because it's, it's only providing a benefit for a much more focused group of individuals rather than community-wide. In terms of the three applicants that we received this year, and I might add, we do have the information out there on the website, open for the additional round that we were going to make available for the remaining funding this year, so that is open, and we've begun to reach out to local organizations on that. Council will recall that we provided the approved funding for two organizations at $1,000 apiece. There were some questions about what these groups were remaining eligible for and so forth, and so just a little bit of clarification. On citywide cheerleading, of course, we corrected the situation. They, they should be deemed fully eligible. We, we had made it a relationship with something that was, was inaccurate, so we want to say that they are fully eligible. There is still, I think, some inconsistency with Xenia High School cheering hip-hop under the current guidelines, as, as I understand it, they are, even though they're not funded by the schools, they are indemnified by the school, they, they carry the title, they are a school organization. So under the current rules, they would be limited to, I think it's the $2,000 limit. And then Diamonds and Pearls, and this is, this, this final point kind of applies to all three. One of the provisions in the existing guidelines is that the funding should go, cannot go for more than 50% of a project total. Unfortunately, that is a, a difficult criterion to, to assess to these because, for example, with Diamonds and Pearls, they're asking for a range of equipment that we would purchase 100% of. So, you know, I, I'm not sure what you do there, because they're not, it's not like it's a project where they're trying to hold an event and we could fund 50% of it. I mean, they're asking us to pay 100% of that entire, that entire series of purchases they're looking at. And again, I think it's sort of the same with some of these sort of requests to cover some of the operating expenses. It's not a program or a project, so we're, we're kind of funding something to 100%, so I don't know how you really apply that one. So again, in terms of long-term, kind of laid out the recommendations for what I'm recommending, we move forward in terms of amendments legislatively. Short-term, council still has the ability to amend any of the existing rules if it so, so desires. I would recommend that council consider an allocation to citywide cheerleading, consistent with what's been provided for the other two groups, but, but candidly, my recommendation is that you hold all three of those at the $1,000 mark for this year and reopen the remaining amount, which if you did so, would be $7,000 for subsequent funding for any other community organizations, and then look for adoption of the amendments at a meeting in the future.
Discussion. Councilman.
Yep. I agree with, I agree with the $1,000 each, but, you know, I, I, I'm going to have to sit down and tweak this because on, on tier two, nonprofit recreation organizations, nonprofit recreation, that's limiting it to just recreation, right?
Under that category, yes.
And I don't think that's fair to, not all of our children play, or play sports or cheer. You know, some are involved in the arts and this and that. I, I would be totally against, against that one, and, and in the past, and I've talked to you, I've talked to former city manager Jim Percival, we give these organizations money, but they will not give us a financial statement. I want to know, I want to, I want to know where the money, where the city, where the taxpayers' dollars are going. If they can't give us a financial statement, there's, there's a red flag there. That's my personal opinion, and I'm not picking on anybody, but why wouldn't, why couldn't you tell me where your $1,000 is spent?
I completely agree with that. I, I think it's incumbent upon us to, to ensure that these dollars are spent appropriately. And, and I should clarify on that tier, too. I, I actually agree with you. When I say recreation, I don't mean just physical recreation. I would consider art programs, like some of our robotic programs that we have. I would consider any of those recreational activities.
Okay, I thought you were just talking about sports related.
No, no, I think it needs to be broadly for all those different.
Something more like BRACCA.
Yes, right.
And I agree, will $5,000 help BRACCA?
Oh, tremendously.
No, I agree 100% with the allegation, allegation to BRACCA. So, but I, personally, I need to tweak some of this, but.
It is certainly a place to start.
And I agree with the $3,000, we've got $7,000 left. How are we going to get the word out to the, and do we have a deadline on when that $7,000?
I think the deadline, as we talked about with council before, is going to be October 31st. We've already got it on the website. In the fall newsletter, we'll have a portion devoted to this. We've already reached out, sent information out to the Xenia Area Association of Churches and Ministries, and want to use them as a sounding board to get to other organizations. And I've talked with Brian Fortuner about tapping into the email list and context that he has, that he's used for Play Xenia with all the different recreation groups. So that's how we're starting, just as we've had problems with Play Xenia, talking about how do you connect? We're having the same problems trying to get the word out to the different organizations that would be eligible, but we're certainly taking those steps to try to get the word out.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President.
In general, I'm in agreement with most of these guidelines, and we'll, that's a topic for another conversation. Just for point of reference, I'm in agreement with the 2015, your, your plan laid out there for BRACCA and First Fridays. I think that takes some pressure off some fundraising efforts of definitely the BRACCA group to help seed those programs. And I'll let the rest of the colleagues speak on this, and I'd like to try to make, to take care of that citywide issue tonight. I know other groups wanted more money, but for those who have done lots of fundraising, sometimes I'll just take the $1,000 and be happy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
We're going to go ahead and vote.
I think you had provided this for us to consider.
If I may, I would certainly, if you're asking, endorse taking care of nation, or of citywide this evening.
Yes, I was going to make the motion that we provide citywide $1,000 as we did the other groups.
Okay.
I checked.
We have a motion and many seconds from the vice president and others. Is there any discussion or question on that motion, please, for $1,000 out of the community fund to citywide? Seeing none, roll call, please?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now coming back to the city manager's question, I heard from Councilman Lauterback, he would like to look at and digest this, and I believe I heard the same from the vice president. Any other thoughts on that?
I just believe that's really what you want us to do. You just, you know, gave it to us and to look at and to discuss with you before you go further, is what I understood you to say.
I would very much like the next time we take this up for it to be to finalize the guidelines for next year. So to the extent that if you want to contact me 101, sit down in person or via email so that we can tweak these to get, you know, to a point that you're all comfortable with, and then we'll get that into legislation and bring it back.
Did you email this to us, or?
No, I did not.
You just sent the group, I know, with Councilman Calviss sent an email, he wanted to stay involved in that conversation.
Yep, yep, I can send it back to everyone.
He'll be ready for the next meeting.
Could I suggest we set ourselves a, a deadline of, if you will email this out tomorrow, by, say, close of business next Friday? If we could have comments back to the city manager and discussions done, that way he could bring something back to us without over haste by the next council meeting?
It's fine. It works for me.
Thank you very much. Anything else to update, Mr. City Manager?
That is all I have this evening.
Thank you very much. Anything from my colleagues on summary of action items, please? Seeing none, reading of communications and discussion. Councilman Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. President.
thank you for watching, and just keep 9/11, and remembrance of those that lost loved ones. And I remember that incident. I just turned my radio on. I was driving to Hoover Heights, and I thought, what are they talking about? And then, when we got to work, we're actually watching it on TV. It's just mind-boggling, and nobody knew what was going on, and you heard the sonic booms that were going on. It was just crazy. It's just a sad time for our country, and, you know, we lost our innocence on that. And it's just, a lot of things have changed, and, but we still have the greatest nation in the world. I appreciate every day what people do, the sacrifice that we have for freedoms.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Mills?
I'd just like to agree with Councilwoman Smith with 9/11, that it has left an impression on each of us, and some of us are different, you know, different impressions, but again, it's left an impression, and it's something, as our children learn in history, it's not written in their history books yet, but someday it will be. But it's our job to continue to make sure that they don't forget until they start learning it in school and their history books and, you know, the future. I had a few other things that I wanted to bring up this evening. One of the things is supporting our community is something that each of us should do, and many times people comment that there is nothing to do, but they choose to support other areas. And so, I ask you to come and support our businesses and support our activities in Xenia area. I was able to go and attend our town at ExACT. It was a wonderful opportunity to see local people in performance, and it was a wonderful time. I enjoyed it so much. And our theater, which people sometimes say we have a theater, it is a theater on East Second Street, and it has a wonderful art gallery, which many pieces are for sale. So, if you are looking for some art and quality art pieces by individual artists of this community, please go into East Second Street and ExACT. Coming up again is the Circle of Victory 5K Walk, and it is for cancer. It's going to be held on October the 12th. So, for more information, you can call 352-2250, and to get more information for signing up and to support someone. I mean, there's not one of us that don't know someone that has experienced cancer even themselves or a loved one. So, this is a way that you can support your local Green Memorial Hospital and support our community. And this is another trip out to support the community, and when I say "community," I talk outside of Xenia's walls. We have a community of Wilberforce, we have a community of Spring Valley, and this is down near Spring Valley, and it goes along with the Circle of Victory Walk. You can come and join a ribbon cutting on the 17th of September at the Apple Country Farm Market, and it's on Route 42 just before you get to Spring Valley. And it is a Save the Udders corn maze that helps cancer patients in Green County. The ribbon cutting will be at 6:30. Refreshments will be served. The farm market will be open, and the corn maze will be open. So, here's another opportunity to support our community. And I enjoyed First Fridays. It was a wonderful date, and next week, or next time we visit, I will talk about another way to support Green County Combined Health District, and that is a fashion swap and shop. So, save the date on October the 18th, and I will have more details for you then.
Thank you. Councilman Lauterbach?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item. I'd like to wish the Xenia Bucks good luck tomorrow night. They play a state powerhouse, Cincinnati Moler, but I wish them the best of luck, and I hope it's the biggest upset in the state of Ohio tomorrow.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. I did attend the mayor's of Dayton's luncheon at Sinclair, and it was for UNCF, the National Negro College Fund. It was representation from Wilberforce students, and excellent luncheon, and lots of funds were raised, so appreciate that. And then also, I really did enjoy the joint meeting of the Xenia School Board and the council, and as a result of that, we did have a committee that was developed to deal with some issues dealing with kids in poverty. Do you want to speak to that?
Nody Washington and myself are co-chairs, and we are starting to look at the poverty issues, but not just, we are focusing on the hunger aspect of it first. And exile hunger has become a kickoff point, and if you gave last year, thank you. If you can give again this year, we need you. The numbers have increased again in our area, and it's 60% of children in Xenia community area that is on reduced lunch or free lunch program. And what exile hunger does is give these children a bag of food to take home on Friday, so they have something to eat on the weekends, so they can come back to school on Monday and be able to be willing and ready to learn, and that is so important for our kids and our youth. And so, we, as a school board and the council, are, have a small task force put together. We have already set up a website for exile hunger to encourage people. We have revamped the Facebook page of exile hunger. Go and visit. It's user-friendly. You can make donations online now, and all donations go through the Green Foundation. So, it is handled very professionally, not for with school board or for the city, but it is handled on an outside area. But again, it comes down to these children. These children don't get a choice. They can't go out and get a job at that age. They can't tell their parents how to spend their money at that age, and they are hungry. So, I just ask people to give with their hearts. You know, many times people support all different kinds of foundations. I'm asking you to support your hometown and a foundation that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we had a great meeting, and of course, I said, we had two most eager people on. Dr. Nody Washington, who represented the school board, and our own Councilwoman Mills, so we know that things will happen as a result of that. And then, on First Friday, we did have the Buckeye Trail Dedication Ceremony, and we are now a part of that. And so, it was really great, and we did a walk through town and down to the station, and so it was, it was very good, and something, something else that we can be proud of. I do want to thank the police department, as well as the fire department, for being here this evening and recognizing the 911, and also the short movie that was played. I thought it was very appropriate, and real thankful for that. And then, since we won't meet before the 20th for Xenia Festival, want to encourage everybody to come out on the 20th, and, well, something happening on the 19th, too?
It's when it kicks off, is the 19th.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, and the 20th is the parade.
The parade that morning, so, and we encourage, the mayor will be on a bike.
Ooh!
With her helmet, yes, and pads and everything else, I guess. But it'll be on one of those tanned bikes, so I guess the gentleman who will do most of the work in front, pedaling in front of me. But we're encouraging the young people to come out on their bikes as well, so that, that should be really great. And if I don't wave like I normally do, they say that throws the balance off, so I'll probably be just very stiff, but...
Mayor, I thought you have your feet out kicking, though, by someone else was doing all the pedaling.
Sure. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Just so that the public knows, there is a new parade route this year, so if you're used to sitting on West Main Street to see the parade, you're not going to be able to. You're going to have to sit on Detroit Street this year, because it's only going to go down Detroit. I think there's information on the festival's website. I want to thank the, I think it's probably more than just these handful of volunteers. I want to thank Blair and Heidi and Joe and John and that group that puts on First Fridays. They've done another great year, along with their volunteers, to finish out September for the year. I'm sure they're breathing a sigh of relief that they probably get the rest of a couple of weeks before they start working again. And I think the last time we met, yeah, so, I want to congratulate the Xenia Bucks for whipping Beaver Creek on their opening game there. It was, I love football, and I love beating rivalry teams on their home field, so. And again, they beat Bel Burke, but they faced a really tough opponent this week here at home. And the schools are inviting everyone out to join them for a tailgate party before that, for that game in Cox's playground, so come out and support the schools and the kids there. And then, the only thing I got to say is...
Game time.
Big Steelers fan, so kicked off tonight.
Thank you very much. I would just echo the comments of my colleagues about supporting your community. There is a great deal to do here, and as we saw tonight with our first responders here and around, who not only support us, but a couple of them that go out and support nationwide crisis that comes about, I salute all of them, and would just ask that each and every one of you continue to remember the hard lessons of 9/11, and also be thankful, not only for our country, as Councilman Smith described it, but for those, those members of the community who are willing to step up every day to ensure that we can enjoy the blessings of liberty that we have in this great country. With that, Councilman?
I forgot one thing. If you're a senior citizen like me, the Xenia City Schools will give you a free pass for all Xenia sporting events. That includes basketball, football, soccer, whatever, but you have to be a senior citizen like me.
How do we define senior citizen?
Yeah, what's the cutoff?
You're asking too many questions. All I know is, I'm 60, over 65, and I get my pass, but I think that's a great...
I think it's a superb...
Of course, that's for home games only, and that's understandable. That's a great value.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Another good example of Xenia offering services to its citizens.
Sorry.
Now, a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lauterbach, second, please.
Second.
Second by the Vice President. Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterbach.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.